Five, I'm going to call the meeting to order and ask for a roll call from my right. Kelly, I'll start with you and we'll swing around, actually, sorry, I'll start with you and swing around the horn.
Peter Brothers, the board secretary.
Kelly, Russell's business administrator.
Jesse Tyler, school board.
Brian Garland, school board.
Russ Holden, superintendent.
Paul Scarron, school board.
Ed Anderson, school board.
Jacky Ball, student representative. Turk Gier, director of student services. Jody Bergen, principal, Son of the Central Elementary School. Megan Reed, assistant principal, Son of the Elementary School.
Sean Moynihan, principal, Son of the Elementary School.
Thank you. And if we could all stand, pledge allegiance to the flag. I'll start off. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And we'll take a moment of silence for meditation. Thank you. All right, we've got a busy agenda this evening, so let's move forward. I would like to hear a motion for the acceptance of our minutes from the March eighth meeting. And I'd like to also lump in our March twenty-third meeting, we could do both of those at the same time. Do you hear a motion? Anybody on the board?
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes of both meetings.
Thank you.
Second.
Hearing a second, any discussion, any changes or alterations with those minutes? A call for a vote, all those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Are there any extensions? One extension, Brian Garland. Thank you. Agenda review, for those of you that have an agenda in front of you, it's the chair's prerogative to change the agenda order, the lineup, so to speak. So what I would like to do is move the action item AF, which is fill open board seat, to now. We will have some, possibly some small discussion, we will present, each candidate will present, and the other candidate, school board member shall present who their first choice is, and then if someone would make a motion for that, if we have consensus, we will vote. And if we don't, we go along. So having said that, I want to say thank you, speaking on behalf of the board, and I think the board and members here will extend that thanks also to the three participants. Thank you, Gidget, thank you, April, thank you, John. I appreciate your time and efforts, and it's unfortunate that we can't have three open seats, we take all three of you because it would make our job much easier, however, we do the select one. And in that, we're going to select one. Sue Gottling is in the crowd tonight, our select board member. So as we vote to seat or fill the seat with the next person, Sue will take the oath of office.
I will administer.
You administer the oath. I'm sorry. I meant to administer the oath. Sue will administer the oath of office, and the new school board member will read the Board of Ethics. We will seat the board member as a full-fledged voting member in about five minutes, ten minutes, or fifteen, however long it takes us. So I'm going to start all the way to the end with Jesse. I'm going to ask Jesse to put this right.
Are you going to do this?
Which part?
You're doing it.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. If Russ was not sitting next to me, I would have forgotten the public forum portion of it. So we're going to do public forum first, and then we're going to seat the new board member, and in your agenda, you will see that reorganization of the board will happen after the seated board member. So thank you for pointing that out.
Can I also give another general?
Please do.
We have a presentation, a small presentation tonight, under seat information items, community conversations. We have Tim Latorre and some folks in his health class that are planning an event in April, Re-ality Awareness, April Day Two, in my board.
Wonderful.
So we could move that up to perhaps after the school board, the organization.
We'll put that in the lineup. Yes, please. Okay. So is the board clear with where we're going with our agenda, as well as where we're going with what we're doing right now? And right now, I'm asking for each of the board members to put forth.
No, you're going to public forum.
Can I give you more information?
Yes, please.
I had a request come in for selling of some school materials, some gym mats, and we would need permission from the board and have a value assessment of those.
Okay.
And we need permission to do that by policy.
So put that in as action item H. Thank you.
How do you know?
Now I may have public forum. So for those of you that are here, the microphone is there, beginning of our meetings is agenda only, the end is open. So three minutes at the mic, it's not a Q and A, it's a public comment, a mid-comment, and I open it to you. So for anyone that wishes to speak, please do so. Seeing no movement to the microphone, I will now go to what I wanted to go to before I was told I had to do public comment, and that is the board selection of our newest board member. So by order of how we're sitting and where I'm pointing, I'm going to ask Jesse, Brian, and Ed to put forth their selection, and I yield to Jesse. You can give your selection and any commentary, or just give your selection.
Okay, so I appreciate all the candidates with their time and putting themselves out there. My, in my opinion, I think that April Royce would be the best addition to the board for a variety of reasons, thinking of the students in the community and need for expertise and continuity, but also somebody who's going to challenge. I feel most confident that she will bring a different aspect to the board than we currently have, so that's who I would like to see. That's my first choice.
Thank you, Jesse. Brian?
Similar reasons, I would say April Royce as well. I think it's a nice balance to the board.
Ed?
I would go with April Royce, and one of the things that I like about that is she brings back some experience, where we don't have three brand-new members sitting on the board with only two with experience is one of my reasons.
Okay. Having heard three, would anybody like to make a motion?
I started the process, I'd make a motion to select April Royce to the school board to fulfill the term until the next election.
Motion made by Jesse. Does Jesse have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Brian. Any further discussion on this selection? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Are there any extensions? Motion carries unanimously. Right? Yes. All right, April, welcome. Gidget, John, thank you so much. I hope that we can continue to work together, and I encourage that, and I hope the board will also, so thank you. April, well, I'll let you go down with the line.
You can go ahead and do that.
Yeah.
Shall we just go ahead and do this?
That's right there.
Yes, please, thank you.
I'm embarrassed, I was looking, I read everything, I always, you know, as a second to be. That's what I, I missed it. Right, I just, yeah, I will always agree. But I just, thank you.
Please.
Please. And I think there's one or two more big ones that you'll need to do, Mr. Holden, and that will continue. All right, having completed the business of seating the empty chair, I will now entertain board reorganization motion for chair. Would anybody like to nominate themselves or someone else to sit in this seat?
I'd like to make the motion to nominate Paul to be the chair.
Motion made by Jesse, is there a second?
Second.
By Brian Garland. Any discussion? Ed?
I would just like to see in the future, working and sitting before many boards, I would ask that the board look forward to, as we go through the future, maybe rotating the chair every year, so it has a different outlook and perspective. I like the way that founder in London works, as in it's their, end of their three-year term, they'll sit his chair and then go out, so I would hopefully look that all of us at some point would like to sit in the chair, but for now, I'll go forward with the motion.
Okay, April, would you like to comment at all?
No.
Okay. And thank you. I do agree with that. Motion made by Jesse, seconded by Brian, hearing done, call for a vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any negatives? Any extensions? Motion carries, thank you. Next will be to elect a vice chair. I'll entertain a nomination from anybody nominating themselves or someone else to position a vice chair.
I would nominate Jesse for vice chair.
Brian has made a motion for Jesse to be vice chair. Do we have a second for that motion? Nobody's going to second that motion?
I tried.
Hearing no second. What was that, April?
I still think he has bad luck with that.
Hearing no motion for the vice chair, session two, it fails on the floor, I'll entertain another motion for someone to make a motion for themselves or someone else to be vice chair.
I would make a motion for April to be vice chair.
Motion by Jesse, do I have a second for that motion?
I'll second that.
Motion seconded by Ed, any discussion? Hearing done, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any extensions? I'm sorry, any negatives or any extensions? Hearing done, motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Committees. We have a number of committees that are available. Capital Improvement Committee is entirely vacant. Finance Committee actually has two current sitting members on it. Negotiations is vacant. Policy is, has one, and the Son of the Elementary School Facilities Committee has one. So let's take this one at a time. Capital Improvement.
Hold on, can you go say that again? Capital, negotiations, policy, facilities, I missed one.
So I'm going to give the board members a quick minute to look at what's here and what's available, and see where they can best put their talents.
Do you want to go in order, or can I just throw my hat in the ring for one?
I just throw your hat in the ring for one, there's plenty of seats.
I'd like to help with elementary school.
Jesse is interested in elementary school. I don't know if we should take a motion.
Do you decide if the committee's going to have a conflict?
So we'll work that out. So hearing no conflict, Jesse's one for the Son of the Elementary School Facility, and I'm currently on that committee, and is there anybody that would like to take my position on that committee?
No, honestly, I think what like we discussed last year, having you on there with the knowledge of the experience of what happened before is valuable, so I like the idea of one new and one experienced.
All right, well, I will stay. Capital Improvement Committee, we have three vacancies.
I'd like to be involved in that one if I could.
Brian? Anybody else?
Let me work this way, I'm very interested in negotiations and finance, and I'm more than happy to sit on whatever other committee is needed.
So the negotiation committee, we just finished negotiations, so our committee probably wouldn't need to be at the end of next year sometime, could really stop looking out, moving forward for the following year, just so people, it's kind of an idle committee.
Okay, thanks. So finance, capital improvement, and policy. I currently sit on the policy committee, and I would like to continue on that policy committee. I would like someone to weigh in also, having a committee of two is better than one.
And I have the policy, and I have more availability if you'd like, but if somebody else wants it.
Okay. Jesse, Brian, Ed, policy goes to you. Finance.
Me.
So if April is interested in finance, Jesse, Brian, Ed?
I'd be happy to sit on that.
Excuse me? Brian's currently?
I'm the alternate.
You currently are the alternate?
Yes.
Do you want to ascend to a full, or do you want to stay as alternate?
I think the alternate was just because of ease of getting signatures, depending on schedules for travel, so.
Okay.
I can stay the alternate if Ed wants to.
Okay, so finance currently is April, Ed, Paul, and if you want to stay, it's all committed to your party. For you and the audience, all we do is review manifests. Capital improvements, couple slots available there. You may.
It's generally a good committee for folks who are new to the board, to get into the facilities and actually get a look around, you really get an in-depth personal look at our facilities and what's going on, and what we have sort of in our schedule as potential projects moving forward, what's been brought up in the last four or five years, and sort of timelines on those, and then helping us make recommendations as far as bringing things forward, whether through warrant, article, or in the process.
Yeah, I'd be interested in that with the combination of the elementary school.
There's Brian and Jesse, and Ed, would you like to be an alternate on that?
Sure.
Ed is an alternate. All right, our committees are full.
Let's send it up that piece, so you can go down.
Let's have negotiations over.
Oh, I'm sorry. Negotiations, April, and frankly, I think we, Brian's the last seated member, I think Brian probably should stay, whereas I don't, there is work that can be done.
Okay.
For the historicals.
For the historical perspective. Now I feel old.
April and Brian, do we need an alternate for that, or just we need April and Brian?
It's right with experience.
Okay, so, just to recap, capital improvements, Brian, Jesse, and Ed as an alternate. Finance, April, Ed, and Paul.
With Brian as alternate?
Brian as alternate.
And that's just for being able to get big signatures.
Correct.
Right, and just so you know, there's a very tight window, each pay period when they need to do it, that's why we want so many signers, because if somebody's out of town, we need two signers, so.
That's correct, thank you. Negotiations, April and Brian. Policy, April and Paul. And facilities, Jesse and Paul. Thank you. We're filled, full. Whereas we've changed the lineup, we're going to have student presentations. So, Mr. Latorre, you are on that, thank you.
Tim, I'll let you and your group take it and sort of give an outline. I'll start just quickly with the community conversations piece from the RISD, the survey taken two years ago. We formed a committee, several folks within the community, police chief, town librarian, folks from both schools here and at Mount Royal, and we've had some opportunities to meet with community members on several different nights, but we've continued that committee moving forward, and we now empower our students to take that even further.
We have a short presentation to the screen.
So this warms up. My name is Tim Latorre, I'm one of the PE teachers here, I also teach middle school and high school health. Many of you may or may not know, April is Alcohol Awareness Month, and about a month ago, we sat down with Mr. Holden, Chief Cahill, Officer Pusser, and Jackie Watkins, one of the guidance counselors, and we talked about what we can do to raise awareness here in our school, but not just in our school, in our community as well, maybe more of a community event. I had the pleasure of going to Manchester a couple weeks ago for that opioid awareness event that they had for the student bodies around the state, and there were eight thousand students in attendance, and I didn't really know what to expect going into it, and we know opioid use is a problem in our state and around the country. The head of the DEA was there asking for help from the students, and that, to me, was one of the most powerful statements I think I've heard from somebody that high up. Jeff Sessions was there and spoke, you know, so him to be there could really put on, that was a big deal for New Hampshire. And with April being Alcohol Awareness Month, Chief Cahill and Officer Pusser had asked if we could incorporate something into our health class, and I was in high school once, and I know what I was like as a high school student, and some of the messages we got in high school were just say no, don't do it. Okay, well, as a teenager, you hear those messages, where you're probably going to try, okay? It's a kind of, it's a rebellion thing. And we wanted to approach it a little bit different, okay? It's Alcohol Awareness Month, we wanted to make a week of it and really use the word awareness. We wanted to have it come from the voice of the students, not the adults. And that just kind of reminded me of what that DEA had said at the opioid awareness event, that it needs to come from the students. This is an awareness event, it's to talk about things related to alcohol, talk about how, talk about how it might be affecting our schools and community, and really try to open a discussion for the students and the community together to kind of put it on the forefront for at least a week. So these guys put together a presentation, I'll have them introduce themselves, and then I will step back.
I'm Flat, I'm a sophomore at Son of the High School, and Matt Nelly Gonzalez, my junior. I'm Hannah Hansen, I'm a sophomore, and I helped her conversation. So what is Alcohol Awareness Week? It's a week of activities to bring awareness to the effects of alcohol, and what the effects they have on the body, and how they can impact your life socially, in your school, and stuff like that. So the activities were decided, were chosen by the students, they are organized by the students, and they will be put on mostly by the students. And the reason for this is to help educate and make students aware of the effects of alcohol, so instead of being reactive to a bad situation, we want to be proactive, try to prevent bad situations from happening. And the best way to do this is to help people make smart decisions, so they don't end up making a really stupid decision in their future. So the high school health classes are the ones we're putting us on, that involves us three and a plethora of other kids. We merge into small groups to create a big event. So we collaborate also with the community, some police department, different radio stations, and newspapers, we're trying to get that through this out there. And everybody is invited in the community, in the school, any parents, or anybody who wants to come and educate themselves about alcohol, we're all invited. So one of the things we're doing is we're passing out bracelets, which are these, and if you guys want some, we have some. And these will be distributed during lunches, before school, when kids walk in, we'll give them the bracelets and a slip of paper that has one of the statistics that we talked, from the survey that we talked about, it was a survey about.
Youth Behavior Survey.
It's a youth behavior survey that we took two years ago, because a lot of kids just haven't seen that, and it's really important to get those stats out there, and to make kids understand that this is like something that happens in our school, and it's not something that happens over there, way out there in that big city. It's a community problem, and it's a local problem, in that, yeah. We will also be inviting, we will also be having a guest speaker to Doug Hall and Patty Hall, their son Joshua was killed in a car accident, a drunk-driving car accident, and they will be coming in to speak about that, and I believe also that the driver of the accident will be coming in to speak. So we're hoping that that will be a very powerful event that will really make people think and understand the actions that they're taking. Next, we have, to get the word out more, we have a letter to the parents, which will be going out with report cards, so all parents will be made aware of what is going on this week, and they're all invited to the assembly and to another event that we'll be doing. We are also hoping to get our press release with an interview with the superintendent, principal, some students, and the police chiefs, to discuss why they believe this is an important week, and why everybody should come participate in this. We also did radio announcements, a group of students went and did that over those dates right there. They talked about what we're going to be doing, why it's important, why you should come. I believe that the police chief also talked, or some, somebody else talks, and so, yeah, we got word out that way as well.
They also want to come and do a live broadcast for one of our, one of our events, it's going to follow up, since the kids that run the radio do such a great job.
So some of the fun, well, important things that will hopefully be fun that we're doing is we're going to have a golf cart and a obstacle course set up, and the kids who are going to be doing that are going to be using impairment goggles, which simulates like being drunk, and they're going to be driving around this controlled course with responsible adults there, and they're going to see what it's like, how alcohol affects the body and their ability to drive. So when, if they ever do get drunk and are thinking about driving home, they will understand that it's very dangerous and they can and will hurt somebody. Throughout the week, we will also have a crashed up car outside of the school on Monday, April seventeenth, after the assembly. After the assembly with the speakers, there will be a presentation for the high schoolers or some, some of the high schoolers to go out there and explain what happens in a car crash and how it can destroy your life. Each day, we will also have a daily announcement, which will have a statistic to do with alcohol and the effects of alcohol on the body and the risks of consuming alcohol. We will also have these student actors who will walk around and tell their stories that relate to the daily announcements. And it will be a story that will be related to passing away, losing a friend, or getting injured. Something that will at least try to simulate what it's like to have somebody in your community, in your school, who is either gone or hurt or was injured in some way that relates to alcohol. We also hope to get the word out through our social media, which is the Sonopie Twitter page, but also our own social media pages, to try to spread awareness not only to our immediate community, but also around the nation, like around larger than our small little town. We want to try to spread a positive message for our peers and for everybody who happens to see it, to try to let them know that alcohol can be dangerous.
I can speak to this one. So we want to get the community involved. It was not just as soon as we want to get the same message out to the parents, to other community members. So we, Mr. Morninghand and Mrs. Reed have allowed us to open the doors to the community to come in and listen to Mr. and Mrs. Hall speak about their experience of losing a child. The driver is going to be coming as well. Their son Joshua was the passenger, and they were best friends. And I got to see a little short video on it, and it's, it's pretty powerful. To follow that will be the crashed car presentation that some other students will be putting on. More than welcome to come to that. And on Tuesday, the 18th, rain date is Thursday, April 20th. The impairment goggles and golf cart simulation will be set up. If you want to try, come on over. Well, those are the times that they'll be available and get a shot. And the big thing, the big reason why we're here today is to get the word out to the community and invite you to come be a part of this awareness that we're talking about.
At the very end of all these events, we're going to be sending out a Google Form survey to all the students in the school, well, all the students, whether they participated or not, to try to get feedback for the events that we had take place, just see how we can improve in the future if we choose to do this, which I hope we do. And to see if it was good and it was actually effective, rather than just being a bunch of people trying to tell you what to do. So this is very important, because we want to try to keep improving this so our message can be more effective than it is this year. We'd like to thank the superintendent, Mr. Holden, for, you know.
Great, Mr. Holden.
Yes. Principal, Mr. Morninghand, Mrs. Reed, Chief Cahill, Officer Pusler, school board, you guys, and Mr. and Mrs. Hall.
Thank you for your time, and maybe we'll see some of these events that we have. Thank you. I appreciate it though, but I respectfully decline.
Brian, thanks to the folks who need to turn their lights back on.
Yeah.
Gray's back there.
Nobody's turning the lights on.
Should be right there, kid, on that.
Thank you. All right, next on our agenda, updates in the school. I'll first start off with our school representative, Jackie.
Jackie Walsh. Thank you. We had our father-daughter dance. I believe that was a success, and it was a lot of fun. There was a lot of families who went and enjoyed their time there. And I hope that we can continue to sit and make the tradition for Sonopie. Today, all the juniors at our school took the SATs. And we appreciate the school sponsoring the SAT with the SA. There are mixed feelings about how people did, but I believe everybody has, is relieved that they're done and over with, and we can put that behind us. Next Friday, there is going to be a lock-in, and the student council is planning that. It'll go from eight o'clock at night to six in the morning. And there are a lot of fun events planned for that, and I hope we have a good turnout. And that Saturday, after the lock-in, there's the senior fundraiser, the color one. And hopefully that has a good turnout as well. A lot of students are really excited for it. And if you haven't signed up, you should, because it seems like it's going to be a really, really fun event. That's all we have.
Thank you, Jackie.
Can I just comment?
Yes, does the board have any questions?
I was just going to comment, are the seniors going to have enough sleep to be able to run the color one?
Just not the seniors.
Both simply run and coordinate.
Hopefully.
It's an interesting comparison.
Any other questions for Ms. Paul?
So the lock-in isn't just the seniors, right? It's the whole.
Right, it's the whole.
The whole high school?
Yep.
What teacher does that job?
We actually have quite a few coming in, in shifts, so that they don't have to be there all night, because a lot of people don't make it through the night.
Mr. Morninghand is not one of them. Well, thank you, Jackie.
Absolutely.
Moving on to Sonopie Central Elementary School, Joey Bergen.
Uh, we have lots of things going on. Our after-school clubs are running. We have one for a week left of that. We've got some great things that the kids are participating in. Tomorrow, our fourth and fifth grade will be going to Symphony in Boston for their education program. Mrs. Bailey coordinated that to support our students that are in band and to give them a little insight into what it looks like when we have a little bit more professional, well, a lot more professional. We have a lot of science going on. We had UNH engineering students come last Friday, and our students worked on designing amusement park rides using all kinds of recycled materials. And then the week before, April vacation, the Boston Museum of Science will be coming and doing a presentation at each grade level throughout the week. They're coming different days of the week. And Thursday night, April 20th, the PTO is sponsoring a science night. So we invite the community to go for that.
Thank you. Does the board have any questions?
No, just a comment. Earlier in the interviews, it was brought up about foreign language. And I just wanted to comment that they actually run a Spanish club right now. And my daughter's honestly loving it. So I'd like to see, next year, hopefully we can continue that and maybe encourage some of the French students to come down and do it as well.
We have had, we have, ugh, we have had French and Spanish offered before, during, after-school clubs. Um, it depends on what trips they're doing. So if they're doing a.